Hi, good evening everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you. Start bang on time, got a lot to get through. Thank you for turning up this evening. Isn't it light as well? It's amazing. Right, so for council, apologies.
We have apologies from councillor Rosecki, who has a family commitment.
Thank you. Decorations of interest. I think that is a no, thank you very much.
Chair, this gets asked at TDC all the time. So in good old Peter Campbell fashion, we've all got an interest in the decision not to accept the allowances that comes further in the agenda. And then the chairman used to say, 'Arbut you're excused'.
Arbut you're excused.
Hold his memory.
Thank you. Before we move on to item three, it's right. I just want to bet, that's all. Escalating crime. We have a special motion that's been sent in hot off the press to consider following emergency motion. RTC should write to the chief constable to request an urgent review of officer numbers in Ramsgate in light of a number of dreadful crimes that have occurred recently. Town council would also like a meeting with the MP and the police to discuss the matter as soon as possible. This has been sent in by councillor Auburn, I believe.
Indeed.
If I just speak.
Do you have to suspend? I'm looking to the town clerk. Town clerk, you've got to... Am I happy to go forward or do you?
If councillors suspend. So should we vote to suspend a particular standing order? All those in favour? You'd would need a second or a tour?
Ah, bye. Jumped.
Good, alright, that's fine. Just thought I'd ask, just so you've got it clarified. Okay.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, I guess you've obviously all seen what happened in Albion Gardens last weekend. Serious assault in there, which the police have subsequently made two arrests. It was drug related. And what with that and what with, as we all know, the antisocial behaviour that we have not only on the seafront but in the town centre. Certainly as far as councillor Huxley and myself are concerned, you know, some of the issues that we've been dealing with in East Cliff, with one property in particular, which I won't say where it is, but you know, it's flats and there's been three stabbings there. Drug dealing, drug taking, and it's affecting other residents in the block. And the police appear not to do anything. And I think that's the problem, it's the appearance of it. And I subsequently wrote to who I thought was the chief inspector, but turns out that she was moved on last November.
Rihanna.
That Rihanna, yeah. And we've now got a chief, the acting chief inspector is Ian Swallow. It's taken him a while to get back to me. He subsequently has. And he's going to come back to me again once he's got a sergeant to review various cases. However, my view to you is that if we do nothing, nothing will change. So I would like for us to agree this motion. Motion. Agree this motion to write to the chief constable, as it says, to request an urgent review of the police that we have within Ramsgate. And but to also for the town clerk to write to the chief constable, but also to include the MP, the police commissioner, and also to include the leader of Thunet District Council to ensure, because they have a part to play in this in relation to the community safety team. Because one of the things that Ian Swallow replied to me on was in relation to what he called the Margate Task Force, which it isn't anymore. So I would hope that you will support this motion so that we can get something up and going and so that we can, so that we can get a meeting. And I would obviously like that meeting to be here with a representative from the chief constable. So I don't expect that we'll get the chief constable. With the MP, I know it's a bit to get them all together, but if we don't ask, we don't get. And I think it's important for us as a town that we can get some kind of strategy from the police of how they're actually dealing with things. Because it certainly doesn't seem as though major issues such as what I'm telling you about the stabbings is that sometimes they just send a PCSO and nothing happens. And it's not good for the town, it's not good for our residents. And I saw not long before I came out, I think in Churo Road, there was a break in there, two men broke in, stole the car keys and everything of that nature and stole whatever from the house. Why the people were in the house? I mean, that's just scary. So I'm not saying you can actually stop that, but what we need is a clear, is a clear view of how our town is policed and what resources that can be put into it. And I am, just so you know, I am in contact with the MP in relation to the issues that I've just referred about the three stabbings, because his officers said that he's concerned about what's happening. So if he's concerned, let's get him involved. So thank you Chair, that's, say no more on that.
Yeah, just before I open the floor. I agree with you, Tyler, I think it's an excellent idea. The only thing I wonder is, is it, bearing in mind that we're talking about an MP's timetable and he'll be busy and I'd love him to be involved, of course, but is it almost worth having a meeting with the police regardless? Because what you said was getting an idea of what policing is like in Ramsgate. It almost seemed like we could do that anyway first, couldn't we? I agree with all the rest of it. I'm not saying we don't do that. But I was just thinking, and the last time we had a meeting with the police, which is funny enough, the first time Craig attended the RTC, was it seemed to change the focus of the meeting, whereas actually what we want to get to is nuts and bolts of like, right, this is Ramsgate, who's, when do they go out? And so on and so forth. Just the basic stuff that we almost could understand first before we decide on a strategy and things like that? That's my opinion. I don't know what other people think.
Yep, anything is better, yes.
Yeah, so I mean, could we add that into it?
Absolutely Chair, I've got no problem with anybody adding anything into it.
Certainly. But councillor Mackinson, then councillor Young, and then councillor Wing, thank you.
We had a walk around, Helen was there, that was just after, wasn't it? Yeah. And the town promoter with Ian Swallow and the licensing officer and various other people. Not long ago, was it about a month ago? Oh, it wasn't that. More than that, two months ago?
Easy.
Not much longer. And I would say he is, it's cold. Well, they're hotter now.
Okay.
It's dark, isn't it? And I think he will be, he is very receptive. He said they're nowhere near up to the level of policing that they had before they had all these cuts. So I think he'll be very receptive. And the second thing is, I keep walking around the town and meeting three police people.
Yes.
At the same time. One very small one and two quite tall. They're not all police, okay?
PCSOs.
Two of them are PCSOs. And I do actually say to them, why are there three of them? But they obviously feel safer.
It may be that they're training, it may be that they were training one of them, you don't know.
Maybe, maybe. But yeah, I would like to say that Ian Swallow, and he actually volunteered to come to our Downton Park meeting, but he sent someone else in the end. So I think he'll be, I think he's quite good.
Really?
Dwayne, yeah, yeah, he's brilliant. He comes in his own time.
Okay, Dwayne, let's get this guy's name down.
In the night.
Yeah.
Lovely, right.
Yeah.
Councillor Young, thank you.
One of the things I noticed when I had to get in touch with the police because somebody was threatening to jump off the cliff. They've got no idea where any of the roads are. To get a quick reply, you know, to say, you've got to start describing where you are and the next.
That's because you're phoning the Maidstone headquarters?
Yes. So how do we improve on that?
You can't. The way the police work, you always have to contact the Maidstone headquarters and then they pass the situation on to whoever's in the area. But when you're describing something, I know I've done it myself, they aren't here, you know. So even if it's a local number, because again, that looks like it's cheaper and so on and so forth. Is this relating to that or is that something different? Go on councillor Green.
There's an app that you can put on your phone that gives you three words.
It's not that posh, I'm sorry.
Oh, so the three, the three words where you can say where it is exactly?
Describe exactly where you are. And if you use those, the police will know exactly. If you have to go.
I've got one, mate.
Thank you. Yes. Alright, so councillor Wing then councillor.
I mean, we've been here before and we keep coming here before. And we had that meeting, the six ward councillors, with Joanne, and I think that we've got a bigger issue here. So I did share a report, like I'm always going through crime figures for work really. We are the second most dangerous medium sized town and we're in the top five of all areas. Some of our crime is actually worse than parts of London. There were actually four incidents in seven days. On Facebook, there was reports of a man wandering around town naked from the waist up, covered in blood. And then there was a woman on the other cliff attacked by two men outside her own property. And it seems to me there needs to be some joined up thinking. So our town centre in Nethercourt is one of the safest places and Cliff End, you'll be pleased to know, in the country. Our town centre has lost its purpose. So of course we've got broken window syndrome, we've got no market. So it's become a bit of a ghost town. All we need is bloody tumbleweed down there. We've, I think we've got CCTV that TDC run that the police don't have access to or vice versa. We need to clear that up. I remember I was talking to PCSO John Litchfield that told me that they can't access some of TDC's systems. So we've got, it's absolutely pointless. I agree with you with the system. It's taken us nine years to shut down TDC's own drugs den up on our cliff. Why is that process so long when residents have now got Ringos and giving evidence? We had a suspicious death in the flat above that wasn't investigated. So I think there needs to be some joined up thinking. Where's the money gone that came in, the extra funding? So that we could, you know, instead of tidying up the toilets so that they're looked after like we've done on, up on the lookout. Our toilets have been shut because of antisocial behaviour. So the whole town's been punished. And I think we need representatives from KCC, TDC, and we're here, we're always here.
I think that's what I meant when I was saying to councillor Auburn with regards to an initial meeting with the police exactly what's going on. Because these things are really important and they would be taking over another meeting, wouldn't they? So I think it's like a two tier.
You should have had CCTV up on Albion Gardens, where is it?
Well, we've asked. Yeah, we've asked. That's part of the Safer Streets fund. We've asked for that.
Right, I've got councillor Christensen, then councillor Heatherington, then councillor Mackinson, they've got a short list.
So coming back to the motion, yes, absolutely support it. But I do think, as has been said, trying to get the MP here is probably not the best route. And I would start with the police. But I would also make sure that we do have the several representation of different departments from TDC. As councillor Lakenston has already mentioned, we did the walkabout and that was a very last minute thing. The town promoter only got permission to invite councillors on that walkabout, literally on the morning of the day it was happening. And it was fascinating, it was absolutely amazing. You know, I can't remember all their names, even Geddes was there.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, he's asked budget.
For the party, very, very valid conversations. And a real sense of being able to get a feel on the streets. So I think we need to promote us being able to do those things.
Amen.
And that's all organised by the team, I've forgotten the name of. The other thing was that, as councillor Wing has already said, we were here for the Safer Streets meeting and we were promised all of these resources. And the last, I was looking earlier today, the last email I had on Safer Streets about that Albion Gardens CCTV was that it would be installed by the end of the month, which was March. And we are now the end of April. And the last thing that I wanted to mention was the neighbourhood engagement meetings, which are so atrociously attended by the general public.
Not very well, Auburn.
Try, yeah, we need to try and promote. I think it's actually next week, it's the first week of May. And I don't think they've got a venue yet. So because I've been chasing up to try and get the relevant information, but as much as possible, can we advertise it on the website and get those things? So those people, the reason I'm mentioning those three is because the people who I've talked about that were in the background, which also councillor Lakenston and councillor Wing mentioned, need to be a part of this meeting as well, those parts within TDC, all of those different bits, so.
Okay, first of all, I definitely do think that MP does need to be involved, but like I say, on the second tier possibly, we need to just get information to give to the MP when he comes almost. You said the town promoter only got permission for the walkup, for people on the walkabout on the day. Why was the town promoter getting permission for people?
She was the one that was liaising with whoever was organising it at TDC. So it was Joanna Taylor who was behind organising it. So it was, what team was she in?
Community safety.
Yeah, so community safety.
But I thought it was that you don't invite councillors.
RTC was invited in the form of a town promoter. And she was saying, well, I really think that the councillors should be on this. And so she was asking, we didn't even know about it.
Yeah, fine comment. I'd like us to look into that because we shouldn't be getting permission from the town promoter. We should be obviously including the town promoter.
No, no.
I don't, I don't mean it quite like that. I'm not saying she shouldn't be letting us, you know, on it or not. What I'm saying is, of course she should be included, but we should know about this first so that it's a more cohesive approach. Exactly, exactly. It should come to the town clerk first and then it should go to councillors and the town promoter. That's, no, no, that's all I wanted to check, that was all I was. That's, I just wanted to get that clear so that we could look into that side of things. I do have councillor Heatherington, councillor Mackinson, and she wants to come back on CCTV, if not, don't worry. I've got councillor Piper, councillor Green and councillor Auburn at the moment. They've got Richard.
This is the block, I think it is. Are you saying that there were three stabbings in the block?
Yeah, I was going to, obviously because we did it with the family in there and I didn't want to kind of go into details, but it's in King Street.
This is the block I've been, used to go in professionally. I've nearly been assaulted in several of these blocks myself. I mean, what are they doing about the tenancies? Because there is obvious drug dealing into.
One tent's been evicted. I'm just trying to get the other one evicted.
Another issue that you can smell it, you can smell it pervades the whole block.
Well, Chair, that might be just responding.
Ken, go on.
To Heatherington is that the family concerned who are suffering the most, you know, have three children and the children are scared stiff. And it's causing a hell of a lot of problems for them. One's about to do exams and everything. And it's just, it's just the worst, it's just the worst thing. And you know, what's going, what's going on there? And one, the main protagonist in the block has various court orders against them. And so they got taken back to court four nights ago, was it? And the police hadn't got the paperwork right, so they let them go. And these, this is the type, this is the type of thing. And I'll wait for my turn, Chair.
Yeah, you've got families trying to bring up their children cheap by gowl, drug dealing, abuse and violence, and some very, you know, savoury behaviour.
We are working with, we are working with the housing director to see if we can get them moved.
And that's why again, it's this multi-agency meeting that we really do need, isn't it? Councillor Piper.
Oh, thank you Chair.
Oh, it isn't, I beg your pardon, councillor Mackinson, I am so sorry.
Yeah, after you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Evan Geddes is the man, isn't he?
Yes.
He has funding for seven new CCTV things, which is mainly in the town centre. I tried to say we needed one on the Sun Shelter, which the tenants think we do. They're incredibly expensive to put up. But he's got funding for seven and that, and they will be going up. The other thing Ian Swallow said, I sort of agreed with him. This sort of goes against what councillor Auburn has been saying. There is a more of a perception of danger here. I know there are dangerous bits, yeah. But there is more, you know, people say they won't walk down the High Street at night. But, you know, it's rubbish.
Well, it's not rubbish if you're scared to walk down the High Street at night, you're scared to walk down the High Street at night.
No, no, I'm saying from my point of view, I'm not scared to do it.
Absolutely.
And I am saying that there is a perception, which happens in all small towns actually, of more danger environments than there actually is, though there are pockets of it.
I was going to say, well, I don't, I don't disagree with you, but statistics would still show that we're still quite high up there. So whether there's a perceived danger or not, the real danger is actually really quite high. I'm just letting councillor Austin come in on the CCTV quickly.
On the Sun Shelter, I have an email in my inbox this afternoon from Gavin Wade assuring me that there will be CCTV in the Sun Shelter. This is following the White Lives Matter briefing, which came up yesterday morning, which TDC have, to their credit, removed immediately.
Thank you, thank you. Sorry councillor Piper for.
It's okay, thank you Chair. I like councillor Auburn's proposal. If anything, I think it is such an important issue that we've got to have the heavy mob here and we've got to have them here straight away because they're the ones with the decision making power. They're the ones with the money. So if I were to write this, councillor Auburn, I would be in the quotes, RTC should write to the chief constable and request an urgent review of officer numbers in Ramsgate in the light of the dreadful crimes we have occurred recently. The town council would like a meeting with the MP, the chief constable or his chosen senior officer representative and the local commander. If you ain't got the local commander here, you ain't got anybody who can make a local decision. So I would go for MP, chief constable or his chosen senior representative, local commander and TDC.
I would second that chair as well. Okay.
Could I just ask, please commission the sort of line this?
Police and Crime Commissioner, that might be the chosen representative of the chief constable. Hence the phrase, senior officer. MP, senior officer, TDC and the local commander.
Could we add, because we've got in, I think it's, you said something like in light of recent incidents, can we add after that an ongoing crime figures? Because I was, we were sat here two years ago and I was spouting off the monthly figures. And what's really scary about the figures I've looked at now, which are all available, is our two top crimes, a serious violence and sexual assault. We know domestic violence in this, in this area is rife. But then when you start looking at who's convicted for these crimes, the conviction rate is really, really low. You know, no evidence found, couldn't find the purpose here, which is also shocking. So I mean, we have to say that the four events have been really sickening, but there is an ongoing level of crime.
I think when, when we come to vote, we'll read this out again to make sure everybody's clear on what we're doing. Right, so I've got councillor Green, councillor Auburn, councillor Ara, and then councillor Austin, and then councillor Heatherington. You're done, going to cross you off. Councillor Heatherington after councillor.
I think this is an excellent initiative. I would certainly include the police.
Certainly.
Crime Commissioner.
Indeed.
One of the reasons that the court, one of the reasons that the court's crime is so low is because the residents patrol this.
Yeah. Yeah. Because it wasn't so low, was it? There was space.
It's true that there are locals spaced in those.
But after five o'clock, that's another reason.
But they still have the.
Yes, from Margate.
Shuts down.
Yes. Yes.
Both, police based.
Yes, thank you. Councillor Auburn.
Yeah, thanks Chair. Effectively, I was going to say what, literally what councillor Piper's just said, because whilst I was, I'm happy to have anything that'll make the motion better and give us a stronger point, point of view, I do think we should do things at the same time because we need to get this off the ground. We need to write to the, to these people as soon as possible. And I do believe an email is the best way of doing it because it will get to all of them at the same time instead of letters, they've unopened bloody letters anyway. So emails like that. And I agree, I'm happy with what councillor Piper said. Happy to include that. I'm also happy to include what councillor Wing has just said because I think that's spot on.
Thank you. Councillor Ara.
Yeah, I will also full heartedly support your motion. And I think we have started this policing about two years ago during the first pandemic. This antisocial behaviour was so bad in Harbour Street. That's when I start, I actually written to Rihanna when she was the chief constable. Then we organised an online meeting. I think we had that meeting twice, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
And we were supposed to have them like quarterly every three months. Then suddenly went wrong. We haven't been, you know, I think Steve has been chasing them out, you know, to have the meeting, but we never had the meeting to, you know, talk about this. But the crime is going on everywhere. I mean, King East is dreadful, I know, I hear this every day. People are really frightened to go into King East now. And it's so bad, I mean, Harbour's town centre is bad anyway because we don't have anybody walking about it. The town centre is becoming a ghost town. So I think we, yeah, there's no purpose. So we really need to do something about it immediately.
Okay, councillor Christensen.
I just wanted to say, I've just quickly looked it up and the NEM is week tomorrow.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
The NEM is week, neighbourhood engagement meeting is tomorrow, but I still don't have a venue.
Would we offer the venue here and we all attend?
I was going to say, offer the venue here because I think one of the, one of the problems it is that we have, people often don't know what's going on or they don't hear about it and so on and so on and so on. And if we had it here and it was live screened, then at least you're reaching people that aren't actually coming to a venue. So I would suggest that we have as many as we can. I know this is an admin thing. I'm just suggesting that we think about this to see if we can accommodate it. Because if we can live screen any of these types of meetings, we instantly double our figures of who's attending, don't we? And so this has got to be the perfect facility. So that was going to be my suggestion for any of those meetings.
Great.
Good idea. Previously, it's been held in the corner coffee shop, Good idea. Previously, it's been held in the corner coffee shop, which is the church up on the corner of the Park Road. I don't know where else it's been held, but it has also been held on Facebook Live in the live.
Ellie Park.
I went to one at Ellie Park. I went to the one at library and there was only me.
If it's gonna have any kudos.
It was avenue as well, Lambs Club.
Any kudos, it needs to be here and it needs to be live screened and it needs councillors and any other stakeholders attending, doesn't it really? Um, if we could get those details to the town clerk so that could go out on an email, please councillor, then that would be great too. Um, and liaise with with, um, the town clerk with regards to if we can use here and so on and so forth, if that's all right. Cheers. Anyway, we're at the point where we're going to vote for the motion. So if we could have it read out again, thank you.
Uh, Ramsgate Town Council should write to the chief constable to request an urgent review of officer numbers in Ramsgate in light of a number of dreadful crimes that have occurred recently and ongoing crime figures. The town council would also like a meeting with the MP, the chief constable or his representative, the local commander, TDC and the police and crime commissioner to discuss this matter as soon as possible.
All those in favour? Lovely. Thank you very much.
Sorry that took so long, but I think it was important to to get that.
Fine. Right. Number four councillors be asked to vote to reinstate standing orders and the meeting will commence. Those in favour? Okay, here are we. Let's have a look. Um, so item number three, community assets. To receive a written report from councillor Wing and consider the motion contained therein that the council should draft a community asset strategy.
Okay, so I'll just read what I put. Communities and local government assets of community policy in 2011 clearly states that over the past decade, communities have been losing local amenities and buildings. The village or housing estate shop, pub or community centre or village hall. On average, nearly thirty pubs and forty village shops have closed each year. Over the same period, community asset ownership has been growing, delivering real benefits for many communities. Over two hundred communities have bought their village shop. A number are looking to take over their pub to prevent the closing. All too often, the organisations find themselves without the time to prepare a bid before an asset is sold. We know that many communities, both urban and rural, have lost the use of buildings or land that were of important, that were important to them to raise the necessary funds. Uh, sorry, were important to them because they were sold privately or without an interested community group having time to raise the necessary funds, sorry about that. For example, Hebden Bridge Adult Education Centre, a much-loved local facility, was sold soon after the site was marketed, meaning the local community did not get a chance to put the proposal together. Of course, closer to home, we have our own examples of how our assets have been sold and many left to deteriorate, blighting our communities and sadly offering little, if any, benefit to our communities. The Weston Undercliffe Cafe, now many years derelict, sold for a hundred K when a community group had raised seventy K. The old motor museum, derelict, the slipways, derelict, the West Cliff, derelict. Boundary Road toilets sold, St Lawrence toilets sold, town centre toilets closed. In addition, it seems to be little consistency in the way our assets are disposed of. The Ice House is a good example of a positive process gifted to a community group at well below market value because of the strong community benefit, which in this case involves young people. The situation concerning the Granville Theatre has clearly brought into sharp focus the need for Ramsgate Town Council to discuss strategies for retaining assets with a clear community value or the potential for community value. I believe there is a strong and well-evident support within our communities for RTC to debate and develop an asset strategy as soon as possible. We cannot allow more of our assets to be sold off to the highest bidder when there is a clear and significant benefit to our communities. So recommendation, do I read that next bit? Ramsgate Town Council should develop a future asset strategy that will provide a transparent and clear policy and approach to be used when community assets owned by TDC or RTC located within the boundaries of the parish are to be sold or are at risk of being sold. I would just like to amend that because we now have a critical situation on Spencer Square. The leaseholder has no lease. It is now being taken from under her and will be marketed. Uh, the repairs were due to start. I have grave concern that the building, like all other assets, will be left to further deteriorate. And I've got great concern that because of the state, it will be vandalised, it's set on fire. That instead of at risk of sold or maybe at risk of being re-leased, re, 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 re-put out to tender for new lease. Uh, the the present, the the old tenant has been trying to gauge, get information off of TDC and has just met brick wall after brick wall after brick wall. The same situation exists for the, the little kiosk by the asking kiosk there. He's taken two years to get a new lease. The guy at Dumpton Gap has been working for two years to get his lease renewed. So there are, the building is presently uninsured. I'm assuming that TDC's, uh, TDC's insurance will cover it because, uh, the leaseholder has tried to pay the insurance, but that's been sent back for TDC. And we know with, through, through, uh, the, the way, that the southern water damage to the Weston Undercliffe, that, that the, that building was insured at only forty, forty-four percent of its value. That came out because TDC hadn't, hadn't looked, hadn't re-assessed its own assets. So, so, yeah, I, I think we, 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 we do have money in the pot. It's community money, it comes from the project and there is clear evidence that residents want their assets to stay in our hands.
Thank you. I've got councillor Orban. Anybody else? Right, councillor Orban?
Thanks Chair. Um, I'm in favour of a policy. For us to have a policy, uh, looking at community assets. And, um, I'm in favour of us looking at that and how we formulate that. That's, that's something completely different. Um, because we need to be clear of what we want to achieve within that, within that policy. Um, I, I do think we have to take tiny steps with this. This is not something I, I think that we can just build up overnight. I think we need a, a strong strategy with it. And as a council, I think you need to, you need to consider uh, whether that, whether that strategy has a part for Ramsgate Town Council to, to buy. Because, but that is not a community-based bid. I, I know we're a community council, I, I appreciate that. But what I mean is, let's take the, I know we're gonna get onto the, the ground, but if you get onto the ground, you know, they, they come up with a, a community asset, uh, transfer issue. Their, their bid, their application was rubbish and it didn't go, it didn't get through. So now we're getting to the point where you have a community right to bid for it, which is now taking place and is, and is going to be advertised, uh, uh, nationally. Um, but as a council, I think we, we have to be careful because we can't just support one community-based group over another. We have to, we have to be seen to be fair to all. So if, for instance, they're on our six community right, uh, six community bids, you know, we can't support one out of six. You know, we, we've got to be, look to be fair because otherwise we, we will be planting money in where, where we shouldn't be, to be, to be quite frank. And, and I also think as part of the policy, that, that we have to pick the right items. We can't just have a generalisation of how we're going to, how we're gonna spend our residents' money. We've got to be, the, it's got to be ripe for the council to buy something or to transfer. It's got to be ripe for the council because we've got to be able to to show that we're doing it for the right reason and, uh, and that that money is, is gonna be well, well spent. What I do totally and utterly support councillor Wing's proposal on is how the council handles, how Stanic District Council handles its c- community assets. And, um, it's certainly, it's certainly a thing that was gonna raise at council, question at coun- council in relation to when they dispose of an asset, there's, there must be, there, there must be a point within that sale uh, that says if nothing happens over a certain period of time, it's gotta come back. Because otherwise, as you quite rightly say, we've got all these things that sit in there, that's been sold off and, and do nothing. What are they gonna do about it? You can't just let it sit, sit there. These were, these did belong to the people of Ramsgate. And it needs to be, it's, something needs to be done about it. So I'm in favour of the policy, but I do think we need tiny steps to ensure that we get the policy right as to, as to how we go forward as, as, as a council in, uh, purchasing or assisting.
I've got, um, thank you. I've got councillor Young, councillor Crittenden, councillor Green, councillor Piper, councillor Heatherington. Bear with me a second before I let any of you talk. I would have.
Come back.
Certainly. I, I, I mean, I would, I'm surprised that we don't have a community asset strategy, quite frankly. I mean, like, shouldn't this have been put in place like long ago? It seems odd that we're even discussing whether we should be having one. There should be one there. I mean, yes, there's obviously, there's a lot of talk as to what the detail is and what the policy is. But I, but I think in some ways, we, we almost need to, to move that to a different meeting, don't we? Because that is such a big thing that I think we ought to be voting on. We need a community asset strategy and then come back to another meeting and be able to talk about that because that's massive, you know. And we're all, we're all passionate about the town, what things done and, and it's gonna take a long time to get these things done, but this isn't really the time or place. So I'm happy to carry on and, and, um, take, take your input on this. Or we could just hold on and just vote on the, yes, we want the strategy and bring it back.
Could I just cut, we should speak to Steve.
Yes.
Because I think, I didn't, the Granville's mentioned in there. I think it would have been better to have used the Weston Undercliffe as a better example because it is not my intention for us to buy assets and hand them to.
That's what I was thinking. Yeah, exactly.
My, my intention is, is that every asset that comes up for sale, I mean, my, my, my view over the Granville or the Weston Undercliffe is that we should have approached TDC because the original, the original government, the original idea behind the government policy was getting rid of liabilities, not making profit. So it was about removing liabilities from, from whatever level of council there is. Now, I think we, we are better placed to take on board some of those liabilities. So for instance, if we'd, if we'd have taken the Weston Undercliffe Cafe, there would be a cafe there and there would have been toilets and there would have been showers and we would have been generating an income from that. But the first step we should be making, if an asset comes up, if, if TDC is gonna actually get rid of an asset, is we need to approach them and say, we'll have it. Give it to us free because this is a Ramsgate asset. And if you use a Granville as an example, that's the approach I would take. It wouldn't be going to the Kent Film Foundation. We would then start our own process, which would be clear and transparent, which is, the TDC process hasn't been. Uh, and also, we would also be a responsible landlord because I think whoever the community asset group was, then we would be working with that community asset, that community partnership to try and identify the wide range of pots of government money that exist for community groups to refurbish buildings. And that is my main, the main driver for me behind all this is that we shouldn't be paying TDC anything for these assets. We should be agreeing to take the liability off of them. And then we should be working with the approach, we should be identifying the appropriate partners and then working with those appropriate partners to turn that asset into a, into significant community value.
And I'd just say on that, Chair, that the starting point then is that we need to change Stanic District Council's policy because their policy is to sell and we'll charge. We know that with Alvin Gardens, we've been doing it for two bloody years to try and, uh, get something sorted there, that they wanna charge. So.
That's up to double hatters, isn't it? But I'm sad.
No, but that's what I'm saying. But, but that's what I'm saying, Becky. Is that, is that we need, as a couns-, Ramsgate town council, to change Stanic District Council's point of view and policy on the disposal of community assets. That's what we need.
That, that attitude does exist. Dreamland plus four million plus a car park. That, that's what I'm saying. The way that TDC deals with its assets is completely inconsistent. And I think the ta-, we should, we should, we're the tail, if you like, and we should be attempting to wag the dog. And we should be, we should be, uh, aspirational in terms of our approach to TDC, even if they say, no, we want money for it. But our starting point should be, I mean, for example, the Motor House, one point, it was sold for three hundred thousand. Have we seen any of that? Nothing. We don't see any of this money back and our assets are being sold from under us.
Uh, but let's.
Can I second your motion, Chair?
Yes, I, I do.
Well, I'm gonna change the motion. I'm just waiting for the back, batting back and forwards to go, to finish.
Thank you, Paula.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Go on then councillor Crittenden.
Okay, um, I'm going to pick up on a couple of things that were said, um, with that. Um, TDC's policy is based in actually what is the law, which is what, um, the town clerk sent round, which is actually, there is an expectation that assets will be disposed of. And so I agree, there may be, have been an inconsistency between the towns and other things. Um, and that is for, uh, those who are TDC councillors, the double hatters, to actually challenge and, and look at. Um, but I actually, um, so therefore I think the second half of the original motion actually needs to be changed because we cannot, um, intervene where things are. It's not relevant whether it's at risk of being sold or being sold because that is what the, the guidance of the law says that TDC should do. And so should we as a council. We should also sell off what we're not using. And so also the whole thing about leasing and re-leasing also doesn't apply. So I would actually have, Ramsgate Town Council should develop a future asset strategy that will provide a transparent and clear policy with regard to the purchase, ownership and management of assets of community interest. And, and then it allows the law to be, to be followed. Um, this is at risk of being sold. Actually, it's at risk of being sold, but that's because what TDC have got to do. Um.
Part of that law is selling it below, at below market value because there is a community value and that was demonstrated with the Ice House.
Yeah, and that, and that is.
So we could, TDC could give us some of our assets back and that's, that should be out.
Be a part of, that needs to be where we're addressing, um, asset policy at TDC. And it also needs to be something that perhaps we are considering as part of our asset policy of how we approach TDC as a town council, um, will be actually how we make those purchases. Because, you know, we've got Radcliffe House, we've, you know, Albin Gardens, we've got the lifts, we've got toilets, we've got Jubilee Woods. I can't actually off the top of my head think of any more. Um, but I'm sure that there are, um, you know, there's a lot of things going on at the moment. Um, but, you know, I, I, I just wanted to take out that, that second half of it. So that's my, my proposal. Do you want to be that?
Yes, please.
Quickly, didn't it? So it's the first line in the quarter is the same. Ramsgate Town Council should develop a future asset strategy with transparent and clear policy with regard to the purchase, ownership and management of assets of community interest. Happy for that to be tweaked. That's.
I'll second that, Chair. Okay.
I did, I, I, because I, we need to move away from, we're gonna.
Can't just have, um, thirty two.
Certainly, thank you, yeah. Sorry, I was trying to sort, I, I think something through there, but anyway. What we basically need to do to start with is just agree on whether there should be a strategy, a, a policy. I'm not sure whether we want to sort of like postpone that motion to another point, that's what I'm saying. Because there is, even that is something that's going to be quite debated, isn't it?
Well, I'll tell you what, go back and just, um, speak, just pour. Ramsgate Town Council should develop a future asset strategy. That's it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Are we okay with that? Right, lovely. Do we have a second, uh?
Second that.
Thank you. Yes, all those in favour? Thank you. Sorry, I beg your pardon councillor Green. Sorry councillor Green, I didn't realise you wanted to. I'd asked if anybody wanted to and then it was only councillor Crittenden that I heard that, that wanted to carry on. Apologies.
Chair, can I just, um, that, um, perhaps we could, or perhaps the town clerk could look at other councils who have such a policy um, that perhaps a local council has saved, uh, buildings that have, yeah, assets of the town. And that would save us a lot of time and research.
Yes.
I've actually, out of curiosity, I've already, um, asked on my larger councils clerks forum if anyone has such a document, which will be very specific to their areas, but to see how they've, uh, managed and addressed the topic, to see if there's anything that might be suitable for here.
Okay. Community assets point two, to receive a written report from councillor Wing to consider the motion contained therein that the council should consider options to acquire the Granville Theatre.
Oh, there's a, there's a, the Granville, I forgot to read the whole lot.
No.
I hate reading. Dyslexic, so I hate reading from a script, uh, which is why I.
Yes.
On a lot. Uh, council should discuss the possible ways of securing the Granville Theatre for future community use, exploring the right to bid, a joint venture, an asset transfer or approaches that would secure the asset for the community and enable the establishment of a sustainable asset for the community.
Right, those wanting to talk, could you just, thank you. Councillor Green, councillor. Start again. Councillor Green, councillor Crittenden, councillor Piper, councillor Ara, councillor Maxon, councillor Orban. Right, councillor Green, floor's yours.
I'm not going to say this is a property that's owned by TDC. Uh, um, um, therefore they will take the decision. They seem, they seem to be happy for, for us to take these decisions. That's a river stamp on council. We need to get across to TDC that we value these, we at the town council value these assets in town. Now, TDC. TDC can do a bunch of things and sell for good value. But it's obvious that they're doing something very different for the benefit of all. And they did for Dreamland, very different, but actually it is true assets in Ramsgate. The last available performing space available in Ramsgate. If we're going to change anything, we need to change the attitude at TDC. We can't buy ourselves, if we can't buy ourselves and then look around for something else, it would be too much of a risk. So that's my view of the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just add a point of information on what?
Yes, certainly.
Councillor Green said, TDC seem content to lead this decision for officers. Actually, at the moment, the policy specifically states that community asset transfer decisions are made by officers, which is something that some of us, the double hatters, are very uncomfortable about and which I've spoken on a cabinet previously. So I think that's something that those of us who may have the chance to discuss that at TDC needs to push on. It's not, it's not, you know, not only does it say they can, it says they must. It must be officers' own, which seems inappropriate. Inappropriate.
That officer's decisions couldn't be smooth enough. Absolutely.
Yes, I agree. Right, we're going to go around the table then, just to make this easier. Councillor Crittendon.
Yeah, I just wanted really to think about the wording of the recommendation because to some extent, parts of it are a moot point. The right to bid has passed, the closure of the right to bid, the former moratorium period has passed on the twentieth April. And I know that this was written before that date had come. And so the only option that we have, open to us to secure the Granville is to put the bid for ourselves forward. And that would have to come with a clear business plan of what, why and how we intend to use it. As a council, we have the cash available, the money available to us. We don't yet know how much it's going to be put up for. I've been following the website of the agent that is going to be listing it, but it's not yet been listed. So I don't know what the guide price is going to be. But that is the only option available to us.
Thank you. Councillor Piper.
Well, thank you, Chair. I'm going to be the big bad wolf here and say we've missed the boat on this one. We haven't got anywhere near enough time to get involved in this. We haven't even got a clue yet how much it would cost to refurbish it, to get it up and running, with or without the conditions that TDC might put upon it. And I've heard a couple of times around the table this evening that we've got the money available, we've got the cap, where? It's not in this year's budget anywhere. And I would be sorely disappointed if council were looking at using some of the Radford House money to get involved in other projects because it was given to the council for a project, and I know it was a previous council, that therefore decisions can be changed. But that bequest was given and decided for that building. And before we spend it on other projects, however well-meaning we are, we need to finish that one. Otherwise, we're going to find ourselves in an awful ordeal. So I would say, I think we've missed the boat, so I can't support the motion. I'm sorry.
I'm going to come in there, just with the idea that, look, so this is a tricky one, isn't it? Because like councillor Crittendon said, you know, the date's finished, so on and so forth. Yes, we have monies, there are monies there, whatever those monies are and so on and so forth. But I think it's, we almost like have to look outside of the box of this one, don't we? There was a bid, it didn't work, TDC are trying to sell it off. We can't be seen to be doing nothing because we're Ramsgate Town Council and this is a Ramsgate asset. So for us to turn around and say, well, that boat sailed, is effectively sort of like, slightly wrong in the sense of we can't just sort of like sit back and go, oh, well, that's another thing we've lost. What we should be doing, I think, as a council, bear in mind the perimeters of this year's budget, of the date and so on and so forth, is be thinking, right, what are we doing with TDC, who we realise is the main protagonist in this with regards to, you know, how they sell off our stuff and what their remit is, of making sure that that facility is kept as a community asset and as a venue to us. So aren't we, aren't we looking at the wrong bit? Can we afford it? Possibly. Are we going to buy it? I should probably think if we were to vote on that now, it would be a no. You know, has the bid gone? Can we get a business plan? All of those things, they're sort of like fighting against us. But this is an asset of Ramsgate's, it's our last, you know, entertainment venue, et cetera, et cetera. We can't just say, oh, that's a shame, isn't it? We need to be thinking, you know, outside the box here, shouldn't we? So are we going to be continuing this debate between us about, oh, well, that's that money and this is this money? I'm not sure that's really helpful. I am going around the table, I'll be honest with you. So I mean, if anybody wants to say anything, I am going this way and so you will get your turn. I've got councillor Lindo Piper next.
Thank you, Chair. We could, if as a council, we're very conscious that we haven't done enough to save the Granville Theatre, perhaps it might be possible to offer a donation to help with the renovations, whoever buys it. The thing that concerns me is that it's a massive building and you go inside it, it's damp, it's musty, all the chairs need replacing. It's going to cost thousands, thousands of pounds.
I'm going to, I'm going to come in here.
Chair, can you let me finish, please?
Well, strictly speaking, no, because I'm the chair and I'm going to come in here. So what I'm going to say is, I agree with you, councillor Piper. I think it's, I think it's in some sense, it's a money pit, isn't it? And quite frankly, why would you be throwing your money at it? But I, but I agree that in some ways, it's not really ours to put money towards. So shouldn't we be making sure that whoever does it keeps it as a community venue? It's not whether we refurbish it, it's not whether we pay for it. It's a case of making sure that whatever happens to that building, this is where I was going before, is kept as a community asset. That is the crux of the matter. It is not the money of whether we buy it or do we refurbish it. It's the community asset aspect of it that is the important thing. So apologies for interrupting you, but that's where I was going with that one.
But if we don't own it, you can't make people accountable to how they use it. And so I don't think we'll be able to do that. That would be, that would be like somebody buying my house and then me saying, well, actually, I want you to keep this like this and this like this. And so we don't, I don't think we would have any sway there. And community asset groups, they start off well and then they run out of money. And then the building is just as derelict as it was before because the money runs dry. And.
You're missing the middle bit. The bit that I'm talking about is the bit with the dialogue with TDC.
I don't have to agree with you.
No, no, of course you don't. Likewise. What I'm saying is though, of course, if somebody was to buy it, we don't have any say over what they're saying or what they're doing. And of course, I understand that analogy. The point I'm making is before they buy it, we again have dialogue, as councillor Green has said, with TDC with regards to this is a community asset. So whatever happens to it, this is the thing that we really need to try and safeguard. Once it's sold, then TDC should be making sure that whatever conditions it is that they sell it are enforced, not necessarily ours. But that's the bit that we focus on, is the bit before it's sold with TDC as to what are you doing with our asset? Councillor Young, would you like to say anything or shall I move on to councillor Wing?
I think that there must be, and while I know that there are people out there who could look at it, the building, et cetera, and who could come up with a business pattern for it to make money and to be a community centre.
Hasn't that, but have, again, we've passed the deadline for that though, haven't we? So again, that unfortunately has passed.
The building hasn't sold. Surely TDC can give us a bit of, well, a bit of room to manipulate these things. You know, it's ours. Why can't we get a bit more speakers for what's going to happen?
Well, in that case, we need to have dialogue with TDC with regards to that then unfortunately, but I can't see that happening. Councillor Wing.
I do think we need to try, I mean, as a Ramsgate Town Council, we need to express deep concern over the way assets have been sold off and left and derelict, at the very least. I mean, David says there's alternatives. I mean, I, I believe there are alternatives and we should be expressing an interest. These are our assets in our town and somebody else is selling them. And we've got residents that are angry about our assets being left to be rotting, to rot. The Western Undercliff, that beach has been without toilets for five years now, up to five years. If we'd have stepped in and perhaps had a different approach and tried to have a bit more influence, I don't think TDC is aware of RTC even being concerned about the asset. Has there ever been a letter from the previous chair, from the previous, from the previous administration here, expressing concern over the sale of the Western Undercliff, over the sale of the Motor House Museum? No, there hasn't. And the first thing we need to do is know we've had enough of this because we have to deal with our town being blighted by this. And it takes us right back to our crime figures. We are surrounded by rotting, rotting facilities, community facilities that have been sold off and make our town look shabby and we need to start saying enough's enough. And it might not end up in us being able to buy an asset, but we certainly say we want to be part of this process as well. Because it is like selling my garden from under me and not allowing me to have an input into what happens to it.
Okay, so councillor Wing, you're suggesting that we as the council write to TDC with regards, I think we can definitely do that. Can't we? Have to vote on that.
We should be part of the process. We should be part of that asset disposal process. Because it's on our patch.
How much of the rest of the money is sold from that?
I need to vote on that at all.
Yeah, I think we'll go, yeah, vote all.
Right, so anybody second councillor Wing's proposal? Right, and so what does it say though? Writing a letter to TDC with regards to our displeasure about the way they're handling the disposal of our assets.
Yeah, we're still, we're still going around the table.
Surely just on that, do we write a letter?
We can come back.
Okay.
Yeah, hopefully we can come around again because you might have more money.
I want everybody to, for this one, I want every. Yes, we do. You're right. Certainly, okay. I am going around the table, so everybody can have a say on this particular matter. If anybody wants to say anything afterwards, then hands up and we'll take it from there. Councillor Ara.
Thank you, Lujia. I think we have a pot of money for Queen's Jubilee, isn't it? We were thinking of buying a land. So I would like to suggest that if we could use that pot of money to buy the Granville Theatre and then lease it to the community.
Go on. Clarify with the Jubilee Forest, there isn't an allocated sum of pot of money at the moment. It is a plan that has been worked up, but a potential cost hasn't been brought to you yet for consideration.
Where it's from, that's what I was going to say. Councillor Heather return, thank you.
Just very briefly, I mean, I think it's extremely important we do that. I was very involved with Project Motor House, which we lost. And it went out to consultancy on numerous occasions. There's a lot of pro opinion for it in the town and yet it never happened. And we've got a site that is now rotting on the cliff top.
Thank you.
This would be well balanced.
Councillor Austin.
I support the idea that we, that we consider this. I think if we can't afford to lose this asset, I do think that what we do need to do is engage with Tannock Council's regeneration team, which has created a Ramsgate Future Programme with a beautiful video that says, we're going to do all sorts of marvellous stuff to open up the East Cliff based around Ramsgate tunnels and the Granville Theatre. Why have they not talked to us about this? I don't understand that. And it is, it is difficult to engage with certain of those officers despite the fact that we're the people with the knowledge and the access to the community. It's about working in partnership and I don't quite understand why there is such a reluctance on behalf of certain of the senior officers of TDC to work in partnership with local councils. Like, you know, to give the town clerk every credit, she's done a great deal to improve that and so has the town promoter. But as councillor Crittendon pointed out earlier on, what happens as a result is that certain officers hear about something that's going on, but members of this council don't. And I don't think that's helpful.
Yes, thank you. Councillor Mackinson.
I don't think we should go near the Granville Theatre. It's bottomless money pit. It's not thousands, it's millions. It needs to be demolished and turned into a skate park or something. There are other, there are other properties in the town, such like the Argos Building, that could well be a theatre or entertainment. I can understand wanting to acquire assets such as the Western Undercliff toilets and things. That is a building on the ground. It is not underground with water seeping in from all directions and everything rotten. I can, I can understand that, the Western Undercliff, but the Granville we shouldn't go near. And the other thing is, TDC, dysfunctional though they are, do have a department that deals with property and markets and whatever.
We've got one person.
Asset, they've, they've, they've got one.
They've got one person, I think.
Yeah, well, we don't, we don't have anyone. How would the council, if it suddenly acquired assets, how would we manage it? How would we deal with it? We'd have to employ more people to deal with it, which will put the precept up, which will, it's not our function at the moment. I do believe we ought to be much more involved in it. But don't go near the Granville Theatre. Please, do not.
Thank you. I've got councillor Moore and then councillor Huxley's next in line. Thank you. Councillor Huxley.
Yeah, just, I'm sorry, I can't support councillor Wing's recommendation. We're not a theatre operator, so it's too much money. Just a few things. My understanding is with the community right to bid, councillor Crittendon's been talking about, and that's going on to its garlands, the asset's going to be sold on the open market. There are possibly six interested parties and one of them is the Kent Film Foundation. They put in a second bid, I think they put it in yet, I think they must have done, presumably, with our input as the all councillors. So I think that's a positive thing. So I think there are other people interested. I don't think we as a council should be, we should keep away from it as Pat Mackinson was saying. We're not a theatre operator. TDC officers have to make the decision because otherwise, say, the councillors were involved in it. You know, my first cousin might be putting in a bid, so I would be, you know, I would have some interest in it. And that is in the legislation, the Localism Act, that I think is that you are not allowed, it has to be an officer's decision. What else? Yes, exactly. And sort of, I can't read my writing. Ongoing costs, councillor Mackinson was saying, you know, staff, salaries. Are we going to be, you know, we'd have to put the precept up, things like that. It's complicated.
No, okay, let's break us open.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm also of the view of knowing what the state of the building is, that we should still, we should still clear of, but I've heard councillor Wing saying, you know, it's not about purchasing. And I, and I think that's the right thing, you know, there's no way that we could purchase that and to do what's got to be done with it. Because who's going to run it, who's going to deal with it, you know, in that case. I would just like to say that with anything that is a community asset, it's my understanding, and someone may correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but part of the sale process is that when it's sold, it is sold purely as a community asset. In other words, so if it's sold as that, that is what it must stay as. And they can put that in the sale and they normally do. So, and that would include any other kind of, kind of building, whether it be the Theatre Royal or whatever, you know, so.
Yeah, that sort of like reinforces my point earlier, where I was going with TDC enforced that or so on and so forth. So thank you for that, councillor.
There is, there, there is just one other, there is just one other bit, I think, um, and maybe David. He's been part of the, uh, part of the levelling up fund thing, um. There, there, there's three hundred, if, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, David, but it's, it's, I think there's three hundred thousand pound that's put aside within the levelling up bid for the roll on or roll off.
Yes.
Which nobody wants.
The booze cruise.
Yeah, even, even the cabinet doesn't want it. Now, that's three hundred thousand pound that could be spent on community assets. And I think that we all thought that part of that, whilst the the Grandville was part of it at the start, was taken out. And then how the officers decided the three hundred thousand pound would be spent on a roll on, roll off thing. So I think that's something that, that we need to, that we need to push because that could be spent far better on, on the, the community assets that we have, the bandstand, the lift, whatever that we, that it could be spent on. So I think that's something that we need to make, that we need to make comment on as well. But I, as for purchasing, no, but as for the, the council would have within its sale process, it should remain a community asset.
Thank you. Councillor Green?
Yeah, I agree with us. That's just been said. I think in some ways we're debating the wrong issue. I think anybody is suggesting that RTC would buy this and, and take it over. What we're talking about is how TDC deals with community assets in Ramsgate.
Yes.
Yes.
We want them to appreciate them just as much as they appear to appreciate community assets in Ramsgate.
Yes. And I think that's just the general consensus is at the moment, is that?
Two million pounds for Theatre Royal, doesn't know how much the wind is down. Um, the way they handed over during the land to a personal organisation. So stark, the difference in attitude. And it's that that we need to be talking about.
Yes.
To TDC, now this property is owned by TDC. Until they're sold it, they can do what they like. This process they're going through now, they could scrap to us. That's the way we need to be talking to them.
Yes.
About their attitude, run for community assets and try and get them to work with us.
Yes, thank you. So I've got a motion on the table at the moment, which we can vote on in a second. And if anybody wants to speak before then, that's absolutely fine. And after that, I suggest we go with regards to what the vote is, of course. We go on to how we contact TDC. And again, another motion has been mooted that, you know, we could, we could write to them. Let's talk to this first motion first. If anybody's got anything desperate they'd like to say before we vote on it. I've got.
I wanted to.
Sorry?
I wanted to come back on some of the things that have been said, um, and money has been talked about. The, under the community asset transfer, the price that was set that anyone who was bidding under the community asset transfer had to pay was a hundred and twenty five thousand. That figure was not for the building, it was for the contents, um, or the estimated value of the contents. Um, although how they've got that figure, I've got no idea. Anyone who was bidding, um, under the community asset transfer, not only had a hundred and twenty five thousand, but three hundred, or access to three hundred thousand, give or take, um, for the basic repairs to make the building safe and secure. That's before you even begin any renovations, which is where council headquarters come in. Um, and I, I would reckon you're not looking at change out for a million, and I know councillors' headquarters are doing more than that. But just to clarify, this actual, the reason we're here where we are is because the Kent Film Foundation went through the Localism Act under the rights under there back in, I think it was like twenty nineteen or just before then, and actually had this building listed as an asset of community value. With the purpose of getting TDC to sell it to them, give it to them. Um, and that's why we're where we are, because they started this process in twenty nineteen. In March twenty twenty one, the KFF went back to council with a question saying, when are you gonna sell this? Because you, you've made it an asset of community value. And that's why in July twenty twenty one, it went to Cabinet for approval for sale. Because the Kent Film Foundation started this process off for that purpose. Um, we have had the debate about officers, um, making the decision. However, um, I think even the final sale does actually go to Cabinet for final approval. So we do have councillors who are involved in it. Throughout the process and the discussions that I've been involved in with the officers and with, um, a few as cabinet member and um, several of our people, we've had meetings.
Councillor Crittenden, if I could just say. You can, you can, but, all right, because we're talking about the motion here and you're talking about the process, they're slightly different, so I'd like to keep the motion.
Because that one sentence I want to come back on, on what else has been said, is that when they make that decision, um, and we had this confirmed at the last, um, council meeting, is that, um, they will be making sure that it is not sold for, that it's not community value. And although there are bids going in, it is not the highest amount of money that is necessarily going to win it. They are going to look at a combination of things, and that is the amount of money that's being offered, the value of the estimated value. The people who are bidding for it need to show evidence that they have the, um, building management experience to run the building, renovate it and have all of that experience behind them to access to it. And that their plans for the building are of community interest, so of relevance to the community. Plus, they have a viable business plan that will give them the income to maintain the building long term. So that, those are the four criteria that the officers will be looking for when they open the bids. I hope I've got some should be approved, um, to some of the issues today.
Thank you. I've got councillor Green, I didn't know councillor Heatherington, is this with regards to what councillor Crittenden is saying? Because I do have, go on.
Open an asset, uh, for community value, that's not obligated to the council.
Yeah, that's what I did.
So it's not, because, um, the organisation has passed them, I think, and it's a community value.
Okay.
But it's been signed. The inside is a TDC, you know, and so.
Yes.
All, all of making an object of community value does means that if things do deserve to sell it, they're to be.
First refusal, exactly, thank you. Councillor Wing, councillor Heatherington, thank you.
I'd like to support what David said, what councillor Green said, because I don't think, I think that was, uh, sort of misquoting Kent Film Foundation, and I've had a, a long involvement because I was one of their board members when they were after the Ice House. Uh, and ha- having something, uh, turned into an asset of community value is a way of the community protecting it, and it's something we're looking at for the skate park, uh, for example. You know, and there is a future plan to try and develop that as a council for young people, but it is just a way to protect something for community.
Back to answering the question in March twenty twenty one, to push, get it.
Well, initially, Kent. Again, you're to share the lease with the existing leaseholders.
Right, ladies, if, if we could just get back to the point, because the motion, we've got a motion here to discuss, and that is slightly.
Interesting that everybody's jumped on the possible purchase of the building, which is, it, it, it is not what I said. If you look there, I think the most important bit of this motion is or approaches that would secure the asset for community and enable the establishment of a sustainable asset of, uh, uh, asset for the community. In, that is the, and it's the second half of that. And it is quite interesting that a lot of you have jumped into us buying it, because I've certainly not said that. It's one of the things that could be considered. But, uh, but the most important thing is an asset, uh, an asset transfer or approaches that would secure the asset for community and enable the establishment of a sustainable asset for the community. So, uh, you know, we can tweak this motion round. It is quite important that we try to, uh, stick to that last bit, which is doing everything possible to ensure that asset remains in, it as, as a community, an asset for the community. Uh, uh, the Project Motor House, going, going back to the, going back to Project Motor House, the old motor museum, there have been three, three pre-planning applications that have gone in for residential development up as high as, uh, up as high as the Churchill Tavern on the other side. Thank heavens the planning department have knocked that back. So that was a community asset that is going, is likely to become totally and utterly commercial, a residential.
Thank you. Councillor Heatherington?
No, I haven't.
Oh, that's right. Right, so.
I just say, the last part of what I said, which was the, the criteria that the asset team at TDC have got in place are, should meet that part of what you're saying here, because tho- those are the criteria that have to be met. And it's not a highest bid auction. It is all of that criteria.
But surely this motion, I mean, I think what councillor Wing is trying to say here is basically we're reinforcing that by making our point across. So RTC's point across. Now, whether we do it in this session or whether we vote later on another motion, whether RTC write in again to express our disapproval about community assets being used and, and, and wanting them safeguarded, is a different matter. But to, to go over what councillor Wing has just reinforced, it's not about bidding, it's not about money. It's, it's about enforcing this as a community asset. That really is the focus of this. Councillor Albin?
Chair, I think, um, to, to assess, I hope, um, to, uh, alter the recommendation to that, that the council uh, should discuss possible ways of ensuring the Grandville Theatre remains as a community use for the future. And to, and for Ramsgate Town Council to do all that it can to ensure it remains a community, uh, asset and a sustainable asset for the community.
Councillor Wing? Councillor Wing, are you happy with that?
Yeah, I think it's about us articulating our views and trying to be part of that process, because we're having things done to us.
Right.
The reason that, that I didn't include, uh, the issues about exploiting the right to bid for venture or asset transfer is because we're out of date with those in relation to the Grandville. That's why.
So let's read the motion as it's possibly being changed to, if anybody would like to talk to this, go on. Sorry, there's lots of, there's lots of communities.
To be honest, I, I was reliant on watching the video back to catch all of what Albin said. But, uh, Ramsgate Town Council should discuss.
The possible ways to secure the Grandville The- Theatre for future community use, that bit I got, that's when it's changed. I noted it was at that point.
Ramsgate Town Council should, uh,
Discuss.
Uh, be to write, like, a, a right to TDC to, um, ensure, uh, to, uh, ensure the Grandville, uh, Theatre remains a community asset for the future.
Shall I try and, I, I was, Ramsgate Town Council should discuss approaches that would secure the asset for a community and enable the establishment of a sustainable asset for the community. That's a bit, uh, including, it's about us petitioning, basically.
Right, so, so we almost want to vote on this and say no to it and write a new motion, don't we? Because we're basically talking about an action as opposed to, to discuss the possible ways. We've discussed the possible ways, haven't we? You know, add an finitem. So don't we effectively want to do something concrete, like RTC?
Should session the discussion, too.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Well, I wasn't the, write, write a letter kind of motion again.
But that's it. So, so hang on a second. So we have a motion on the table. I'm suggesting, dare I say it, we vote on this. If, if, for example, we all vote no, we can write another motion, can't we?
Yes.
Right.
I, I think that's dangerous to vote on that, because this is gonna be seen. And I'm voting in favour of it, quite clearly.
Yes, of course.
I think it would be better to, to re, to accept.
Well, in that case, I'll, I will.
Well, I, I propose amendment.
Hang on, sorry, I'm going to ask the town clerk what her advice is. You know, legally, for the best way for this council to move forward, can I ask what would you, you would suggest, town clerk?
Um, so Chair, I think you're, you're right that the council has discussed as per the recommendation. And now there's a recommendation on the table for action, which is writing to TDC as per councillor Albin's motion.
Right.
Um, uh, requesting that, um, that, or reiterating that the Grandville must remain a community asset when disposed of.
So when we're voting, we're voting on the action?
Voting on the amendments, yeah.
Yes. All right.
What was the amendment?
Anybody seconding the amendment? Are you seconding it, councillor Green? Right, sorry, please.
Councillor Crittenden said in the legislation, and it, it will be a community asset anyway, when it's sold.
Yes, yes. There is no harm, we're pushing an open door, I'd go free, councillor Green. There's no harm in RTC saying, we, we wholly approve of, of TDC, you suggesting this should be a community asset, because that's what we will do.
Chair, it will be a community.
That doesn't mean to say that we should be quiet on it, though, does it? Otherwise, they would notice.
It's as the legislation.
But there's, I, I understand what you're saying, but there is no harm in RTC publicly, for the viewing public and for all our residents, to also reiterate that, to, to reinforce with TDC that this is what we want. Otherwise, we, we are just being silent on the issue.
No, we're not being silent, but as, as councillor Crittenden said, it is in the legislation, it has to be sold to someone who is going to keep it as a community asset. So that is in the national legislation.
Yes, I understand that.
We are stakeholders and we are stakeholders.
Yeah, but we're not though now.
The House of Youth, it's, it's our stakeholders because we, we represent our residents.
Yeah, we do.
Sorry, so if we could just go through the chair. With regards to stakeholders, if T, if it's owned by TDC, then surely, yes, we are. Because it's owned by, by our council. So we are stakeholders, that's, that's a given.
To have a view.
I will, I don't mind debate on this, but we do need to make sure that we are going through the chair, please. I've got councillor Huxley and councillor Heatherington.
When it's sold off, we won't have a stake in it. So it will be sold off presumably, so we won't have a stake in it.
But that's.
Ramsgate Town Council.
Yes, exactly, which is why we're writing beforehand, exactly that.
Chair, this is the legislation, that is what the council is allowed to do. TDC is allowed to sell it off.
Right.
Not to the highest bidder, as councillor Crittenden says, that someone who's got a business plan keeps it as a community asset and has the money to invest in it.
Thanks for your points. And then again, when you come to vote, you can, you can have that in mind. I've got councillor Heatherington, councillor Crittenden, and I believe councillor Albin, your hands up. Councillor Heatherington?
Okay, well, this might be, I might be completely missing a point here, but surely, um, something could be written into the legal documentation.
Yes, to, yes, yes.
That's what I've already said, John.
It's national policy anyway that it will be. It's part of it.
And which it needs to be very clear.
But it is in the national legislation anyway.
We, we need to be clear.
But unfortunately, I'm not on TDC, so I don't reap benefits of these conversations.
You can read it, it's in the national legislation.
Thank you.
Picking up on, on councillor Green's, um, addition to what I was saying, um, he's quite right, they don't have to sell it. Um, we don't know, we know that KFF have put in a recent mission. Um, we have no, we've not seen it, we have no idea what's in it. Um, I would assume, I would hope, that if none of the applications that are received are, meet those four criteria that I said, that TDC do have the option to not sell it. And I, maybe that is something that could be woven into the wording of, of any, yes, letter. Um, to bear that in mind and take that into account.
I think we need to cross that bridge when we come to it. At the moment, we want to make sure that TDC are aware of our will, exactly, our concern. If they don't get anything, then we'll do something about it then. We don't need to do anything about that quite at the moment.
Main their asset.
Absolutely. Councillor, yeah. Councillor Albin, thank you.
Chair, I mean, let's just simplify the matter. Let's not get into what might happen or won't happen. What we've got to do is to simplify councillor Wing's, uh, motion. And that is purely to ensure that Ramsgate Town Council does everything that it can to ensure that the Grandville Theatre site remains a community asset. End of.
Right, exactly, which is what we were.
End of.
I second that.
Thank you.
Are we voting on that? All those in favour? All those against? Abstain? Thank you. Thank you.
There was actually a second motion from earlier, that was proposed and seconded. Which was stepping away from the Granville specifically, but to write to TDC expressing deep concern about how assets are deteriorating and disposed of, and make sure TDC is aware of our concerns.
If that hasn't been seconded, I will second it.
Yes.
All those in favour? Those against? Abstain. Thank you. Cheers, okay. Right, I can't even find my ginger anymore, where's it gone, where's it gone, where's it gone?
Could one just say at this stage, there has been a decision at the pre-planning stage for the next overview and scrutiny meeting to set up a working party specifically designed to look at overlap work between the councils. I know I mentioned it there before, but we will be setting that committee up and looking from within overview and scrutiny for people to sit on it, who will then be interviewing all sorts of people, including us here gathered, thank you, with a view to assets and all sorts of ways we can cooperate.
Good. Right, well, let's crack on, because it is half past eight, number four, highways, Nethercourt, 20 miles an hour scheme to receive a written report from councillor Green and Ms Fiddler. Councillor Green. Sorry.
I'm all carried out for me.
Councillor Green to support 20 miles an hour schemes, and also to begin by quoting the man that I previously proposed, in Nethercourt. What we haven't done yet is agree all the money that came into our asking for, put that into effect. Now, I thought that through dialogue between us and KCC, that South Wondertown Club, that we have agreed enough money. Actually, since they've changed their mind, we go along, and of course, when they change their mind, it's all moments, it's on the record. There's no doubt that people on the record study, the charity that have responded to numerous consultations, including one, the anonymous one, in the weekly, about the website, that phenomenal asking is. I'm sorry to have to come back to you and ask for more money, but KCC are now, that's what they want, to bring this in to effect. It would be the first one that, hopefully, is the last one. Through your hands, really.
So the amount that's outstanding is how much? Just save the record, I will. Two thousand? Yes, go on, please.
Right. So at the moment, £1,700 was previously approved. However, there's two options on the table, KCC have now said that the cost to go forward would be £6,322. However, if we wanted to go for road marking repeaters signs only, this would be reduced to £5,048.54.
Yes. And so what was agreed?
So, what was agreed was the £1,700, which was for the terminal signage and roundel at each entrance to the estate. What we hadn't previously had the details of was the traffic management costs of implementing this. And this is where the, I think that the significant cost is coming from.
So the situation that we have on our hands at the moment is, statistically, that 20 miles an hour is a good thing for the area, and this is going to be our pilot project, effectively, for Ramsgate, to see how much that we could do as we swept through the town, as it were. We have to overcome this hurdle, otherwise the whole thing falls down, doesn't it? So we've got to think about how we're going to do this. So rather than just like, I don't think we should do it, or I do think we should do it, we're basically trying to work out ways, people's thoughts. Councillor Piper, councillor Piper, councillor Young.
Thank you very much. This has got a bit of a history, this thing, it popped up on a meeting on 30th of June last year. At that meeting, I congratulated councillor Green for giving us the information that he did, that there was no hard copy written report at that time. There was, I understand, a document sent around electronically to give us advice that it was coming. But as I've said many times on the TDC Chromebook, sometimes you can't open them unless you've had the Chromebook adjusted to open them. So there was no paper report outlining essentially what for me has become a bit of an issue. And when we met again in October to consider the funding, it was put to us that we had agreed to pay the £1,700, something of a fait accompli, because we hadn't actually set it aside in case we went forward with the project. The issue for me is, and now that we're looking at the overall budget, we are looking at way less than 50% of the streets in one ward look scheduled to cost this £6,300 or whatever, five and a half thousand pounds, to do 50% of a ward or less. If we then, and I'm not suggesting that every single ward road has repeaters on it, but if we're going to make it worthwhile, we've got to do it properly. I think it's shown that to do a ward, you've got to be looking at a minimum of £10,000 quid per ward. When we discussed this twice, we were looking at the possibility of £5,000 for a ward, seven wards, we should be able to do that fairly quickly. I'm very much personally afraid that the costs of this will outstrip anything we can match. And I wonder whether it is in fact our responsibility at all. I still think it was a great piece of research that was started, some duff information was given somewhere along the line about how much it was going to cost, and although we didn't have a handwritten copy in June, we did have a hard copy for the October the 6th meeting, and the October the 6th meeting hard copy is here, did not have the details on it from KCC. It, as you can see, it's quite a short.
I see where you're going with this, councillor Piper, fact of the matter is, it's like, also what are we going to do, basically?
What we're going to do is that we agreed that we would look at this, and we would fund this, and look to do this all over Ramsgate. But as far as Nethercourt is concerned, KCC were quite specific, and as a council, we didn't see that until well after October, that KCC's view.
Don't interrupt.
It's a, no, it's a point of order. It's not a point of order, with respect, councillor Green, and you know better than that. We did not have a written report in front of us at that meeting.
A bit, but actually, I mean, you know, that is an irrelevance in the sense that here we have a written report in front of us, it costs more than we thought it would do, we have an issue here, basically, so what are we going to do about it? The rest of that sort of like is, you know, history to a certain extent, so my question to you is, what are you suggesting?
I'm suggesting it's too expensive, I'm suggesting we should not do it, particularly in an area where, and this is the crux, KCC themselves said, and I quote, "The average estate driver would be affected little because they already travel at around 20 to 24 miles an hour."
Thank you.
KCC didn't want to pay for it because they didn't think it was necessary.
Right.
Had we had that information back in October, then we may well have come to an entirely different decision as regards to Nethercourt, not necessarily the rest of the country.
That's fine, I just wanted to know what your suggestion was.
That's what my.
Town clerk first, and I'm going to let David Green come back in on that.
May I clarify that this report, which was distributed with your agenda today, contains the quotes that councillor Piper read from Kent County Council. And this document was emailed out to you with your agenda documents for the meeting in June.
Thank you. Councillor Green, if you'd like to come back on that, and then I'm going to go to councillor Piper, like to reply, councillor Piper.
Last thing, it's not quite clear. Yes, KCC did find that the average speed is slightly less than 20 miles an hour. KCC will only agree to the 20 mile an hour scheme, if that is true. 20 mile an hour, this is about designed to lower the average speed. It's designed to curb those people that travel more than the average speed. And KCC also thinks, I think it's the 70%, or the top 30% percentile. And the number of roads in Nethercourt people are travelling.
Yes.
Or the top 30% of streets are of the order of 30 mile an hour or more. KCC will only agree to 20 mile an hour schemes. Say the average speed was 40 mile an hour, they wouldn't agree to a 20 mile an hour scheme, they'd insist on other sorts of traffic calming.
Thank you, and you explained that in a previous meeting, that the only reason they would accept it was for those reasons again, excuse me. So Richard Heaps, the Kent County Council's schemes project manager, it was reported this in October last year.
So yeah, this is mirroring what councillor Green's just said.
And so he says, "We would only consider implementing a 20 mile an hour speed limit without traffic calming measures where the average vehicle speed is 25, 24 miles per hour or less." Okay, so he was in agreement with that. Councillor Piper, then I'm going to go on to.
It has been said at this meeting that Nethercourt is one of the safest boards to name Ramsgate. And I will not be supporting Ramsgate Town Council giving £6,000 plus to have this crap traffic calming measure in one of the safest wards within Ramsgate Town, within the town. I don't.
First, they've been terms of crime.
Yes. And it has been said that the, I don't think that the traffic calming measures in Nethercourt is a good value for money for the rest of the residents within Ramsgate, they will be paying for that. And whether we get roads done within a time, time limit, I don't know. But I don't think that that is a good stewardship of the money that we have available to be spent on traffic calming measures in Nethercourt.
I can honestly say, as I was going around canvassing people in Nethercourt, it was the second highest point people asked me about with regards to traffic calming measures, and were they going to be implemented, just so that.
And I would, contrary, the people we spoke to were absolutely horrified that only a tiny minority of people from Nethercourt attended the meetings and didn't want it.
Councillor Heatherington.
Well, actually, I was just going to say what you were saying, which was, I also canvassed in Nethercourt, and it seemed to be pretty popular with Nethercourt residents. We spent quite a few mornings discussing this, so I'm surprised about what councillor Piper says.
I've got councillor Wing, then councillor Crittenden, then councillor Austin.
Mum, that's smart.
Councillor Young. Oh, thank you, pardon, councillor Young, sorry.
Well, I remember at the time, when this, excuse me, traffic calming came up, I asked if we could find out roughly how much the other towns had paid. I know that might be a bit irrelevant now, but, um, do we know roughly what Urtchington, Margate, etc. paid for their?
We did look into this.
Yes.
Doesn't it depend on what you have done now, doesn't it?
Yes.
Clear, clear from.
Do you have to have something on the road? Can you not have a street sign?
That's more expensive.
A boat, just a sign, you have to be on the road.
Yeah.
Roundels.
Yes.
I, I mean, I think, mum, I think there's 20,000 homes, first of all, I'll go back to what I remember of that first meeting, and I was a bit angry about it actually, because I thought, well, we want traffic calming on Westcliff, and we want traffic calming down into town, and we need traffic calming up there, because people race through the town. But I've had more time to think about it, so I was quite angry that it was going to Nethercourt. But if you're going to run a pilot, then Nethercourt is a good place to run a pilot before you pile into something as complicated as Westcliff Road and through town. And I think I've worked out maths, I think there's 20,000 households in Ramsgate, because we all benefit from a traffic calming scheme. I go, I drive through Nethercourt, you know, not every day, but I do drive through Nethercourt, I think it's 30 people a household. So I will be supporting this, A, because I think we should add more traffic calming schemes in that, they should all be all over the place. But B, because I want to see, I want us to review it and see what happens over the next six months to a year. And Nethercourt, because it's a tight little unit, is a good place for that to happen.
Yes, thank you, I agree, in a sense, I will be coming on to councillor Crittenden, councillor Austin and them second. But it's a case of like, this was meant to be the pilot project, and if we don't do this, we just sit back and think it's another thing that we're not doing. There's an awful lot of things we're not doing, it would be good to see if we could actually achieve something that we set out to do. Councillor Crittenden.
Yes, thank you, I'm largely actually agreeing with much of what councillor Wing's just said. I am concerned about the escalating costs, but we are already, pun intended, on the road. My, I do remember when this first came up, because I had just come back very excitedly from the Vision Zero exhibition run by Kent County Council out at Manston, where I learned about the townwide 20 mile round prescriptions, which I think, if I recall, was in Faversham, because I remember sending the details on to our new town clerk when she started, it was one of the first things I did. And so, you know, when this was being discussed, it was like, well, this is a pilot, as she was saying very much. And we also do have another little bit of piloting, if you like, of 20 mile per hour coming up with the crossroads down the bottom here, Harbour Parade and Harbour Street, this part of the Kent County Council, tiny, insy with speed, 30 miles per hour. So, I mean, although I am concerned about the escalating costs, I think with some reluctance, I will support continuing it because I see this as an easy step in, this is a neat little estate, it is complete in itself, and it is an easy area to do. And it gets us on the road of that learning curve, because one of the things I remember from the Faversham experience was it was a nightmare and it took them 10 years, and they hoped that everyone else could learn from their own experience. And so this is a ton of water for me with getting on this road, so I do support it from that perspective.
Thank you.
I am concerned about the escalating costs.
Thank you, I'm going to go to councillor Austin in a minute. I agree with you, I'm concerned the escalating costs, and I will be supporting it as well. Because I do think we need to follow on something we started. I think the other thing, it's very easy to turn around and say, sort of like that little group of people there. This group of people have been asking for this and it is needed in the area, as has been explained by Kent County Council, which is why they're allowing it, otherwise they wouldn't have done. So we do have to bear that in mind. Councillor Austin, thank you.
I feel the same about, concerned about the cost. Very worried, as councillor Piper has highlighted, about the potential costs for doing this over the whole area, which is obviously what we're keen to do. I wondered about, in the paper that has been helpfully attached that we discussed in October, councillor Green's paper, there was mention of KCC local transport funding. And I've completely forgotten what that is and how it works. Could somebody remind me?
That's town clerk, remember that.
But if you could apply for the KCC local transport funding, it was some advice the council being had from the vice chair of the KCC Transport.
The deputy chair of KCC's highways committee said that at the start of each year, KCC has this budget for highways. And it might be possible to include it in KCC's. I've spoken to, is it listed here?
Yes.
Yeah.
He said that hasn't happened.
Right. But perhaps there may be a supposed bit of additional funding that we could in the longer term if we did this now as a pilot.
I agree.
Can I also, without issue to be too clear, suggest that I noticed that there's a suggestion that more posters are required to put signs up? And could we suggest that perhaps in the instance of sustainability, the KCC reuses the posts round by the Travers in Italy restaurant, which have been sat there completely redundant with nothing on them for, I don't know how many years.
Yes.
Or indeed any of the other sprouty, just like we have all over town.
Absolutely. Right, with that, then I'm going to go to the vote, to remind us. We are being asked to consider whether to progress with this project at the cost indicated above. Yes, it's going to be more expensive, but it means that we would get this pilot project underway. And with that, I'm going to go to the vote as soon as councillor Mackinson comes back. It didn't seem fair otherwise.
Okay.
Second-
We should acknowledge the crowd.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, go on.
In the motion, can we clarify whether it's the, which of the two costs?
Thank you, but necessary, well done. So in the motion, which one, which are the costs are we going for?
Cheaper one, chair.
Cheaper one, I agree.
Yeah.
Right, I am seconding the cheaper one, the motion. Hang on for a second.
Wait till the hand dryer goes off on the phone.
There you go. Oh, it'd be helpful to pay if there was no hand dryer, I mean, oh, there.
I can ask a question. So the fifteen thousand pounds, is that something that would be rolled on every year? So twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, you'd have another fifteen pounds.
Yes. Yes.
So that budget is at the discretion of the council, so when you're budget setting each year, you could make it aim less, more.
Right, we won't lose, come back. So we are voting on the lesser amount. So in favour of progressing with the cheaper option, is basically what the motion is. All those in favour? Thank you, all those against? Abstain. Thank you. Pat did vote. Oh, Pat.
Are you with us, Pat? You're on his planet?
Were you for that?
Against it or abstain?
I'm on the move. Cheaper version, right.
Is it worth noting, chair, that the cheaper option is only likely to reduce the average speed by one mile an hour, which is still going to leave it in excess of the target requirement? So we've said we'll go for the cheaper option, but in fact, that could be a false economy.
Noted.
Richard Heaps, according to him, not me.
Thank you.
But it's like David said.
Right.
To reduce the average, it's to stop the excessive-
Exactly. Item number five on an eight-point agenda, Ramsgate Fund. Deputy town clerk, if you are now.
All right, the Ramsgate Fund, this is the first application you're considering from the from the new financial year, so there's thirty-five thousand available. Up to three thousand five hundred can be awarded under this fund. And the Friends of Ellington Park are requesting a grant of two thousand six hundred and twenty-six pounds. This application is to provide, is to go towards a batonque piece in Ellington Park.
On the piece.
You've only connected, sorry, go on.
A batonque piece was supposed to be installed under the auspices of the National Lottery Project, but financial constraints made, meant that it was removed at a late date. However, we are receiving many requests as to why from the public who are very disappointed. And they're now trying their best to reinstate this installation. They have already installed an outdoor gym equipment and a table tent, but this isn't suitable for everyone. The batonque piece will encourage healthy but gentle exercise, especially for older visitors, me. It will encourage more visitors to Ellington Park, and playing the game in beautiful surroundings will improve the mental health and wellbeing. It also assists social contact and thus social cohesion. The total project is three thousand six hundred and sixty-six. Two thousand six hundred and twenty-six is requested. Contribution from elsewhere is eight hundred pounds, volunteers' contribution, and a bull set at two hundred and forty pounds.
Thank you, beautifully put. Anybody want to say anything about this? No, 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 I was just about to say councillor Mackinson and councillor Green, but go for it, go on.
I propose that we give them the money.
Right, thank you, councillor Green, sorry.
I do not, let me-
I believe they're not, but I could be wrong as well. So everything I think that Park is designed, it would be free.
Yeah, with the terms of lottery grant.
Yes.
Struggling to charge for anything.
Yes.
Basically, under the terms of their lottery grant, they wouldn't be able to charge for anything because of the substantial amount of work.
Is it Ryan Stone, Campbell?
But it's given, understanding that provision is free of charge.
Yes.
Okay. Councillor Crittenden.
I just wanted to make a note that whilst it sounds like they're asking for less money than they're spending, the difference is in kind contribution. So it is estimated value of labour, onto clients. I just wanted to stress that, because it sounds as though they're putting so much money in.
Certainly. Councillor Mackinson made a proposal, I will second that. We can amend it, that we make it a condition of the money that it would be free, but I do believe it is. But do people want to put that into the motion?
I think we should put that in, chair, just to cover.
Okay, to make sure we know what's-
Yeah.
Anybody else before I go into the vote? All right.
They're using ground cover, so I'm assuming they're not using weed killer.
Yeah.
Yes. All those in favour? Thank you, all those against? Abstain.
Could I just ask a question?
No.
I wasn't aware that the Ramsgate Fund was coming up at this meeting. Am I the only person who's- I think, yeah, yeah.
I thought I just saw it on the ballot. Only that one application, though.
Yes, no, I just, I have a group of residents who want to apply, and I've told them they can't apply till the new-
Is it a rolling process now?
I have to say, I feel like since I've been here, that they've been, they've been brought to you as they've been received.
Right, okay, fine, thanks. Yeah, I thought because it was an extraordinary meeting, it wouldn't count as a claim.
Okay. Thank you, right, item number six, policies and procedures. Number one, to receive a written report from Ms Fidler. Council meetings and so on.
Schedule of meetings, usually the schedule of meetings for the upcoming year would be approved at or the meeting after your annual town meeting. But I've brought this to you early because actually there's quite a significant change, I'm suggesting. And to give you time, if you want me to take this away and consider something else or make any changes, bringing it back to you. It's something that's been on my mind since before I started. And Calc and our internal auditor have described our current arrangements of meetings as odd and strange.
That just about sums up us as a council.
The main thing that must be addressed is that you need to be authorising payments. And this is where, so I'm authorised to, it's delegated to myself to authorise payments up to a thousand pounds. Anything above that must be coming to a meeting for authorisation. At the moment, there's too much of a distance from yourself authorising actions, but not actually seeing those payments being made. There is not a one-size-fits-all on how meetings can be arranged for different councils, and there's a whole variety of different options. However, if you just have an opportunity to look at other councils, always find Faversham, Falmoth, Sevenoaks are very good examples. You will see that they have a monthly council meeting, and there's a reason for that, and it's the authorisation of payments.
I'm going to come into this point, just so you know. Walmer, and I think we all know who their town clerk is at the minute, have a monthly meeting to authorise payments, just so you know.
So, may I?
Go on.
So I've drafted a starting point, and also before you, councillor Green has made some additions to that, which I would be supportive of and not problematic at all. So really, I think at this meeting, I just want to find out if anyone's actually shocked by this idea and what's being suggested.
No, it's cool with me.
Problems for anybody?
We said early on that it was on your agenda.
Okay, right, so councillor Huxley.
In my opinion, there are too many meetings. It's actually a bit wearing. Also, double hatters, we have a lot of meetings at TDC, so it is a bit exhausting, really. A lot of papers to read. If you had one monthly meeting and tried to combine everything, I think that would help, full council meeting. And also, I think there should be committees, so we should be assigned, particular councils should be assigned to a committee rather than sitting on all committees. That was a councillor Campbell, dear, bless him, but I think we need to change that.
Okay, so let's look at what the options on the table are.
Yeah.
So, town clerk, talk us through this before we come to anybody else.
So at the moment, proposing a monthly council meeting, a monthly planning and infrastructure committee meeting, because that's to address the planning applications, which must be dealt with in a timely manner. And then committee meetings, I put in fewer, councillor Green is suggesting more. Could be either or. And also, you could consider that for committees, you have less members. That would be a way of reducing the overall number that everyone has to attend.
What's the quota up for each meeting?
It must be one-third, a minimum of three. So if you had six people on a committee, it would be, it would actually in reality be half, you must have a minimum of three people.
Okay.
Amenities and environment, they've only met once in the last year, and I would suggest that actually the main functions under that committee could be moved under to full council or FNGP. The civic matters, allotments. Probably the big business of the coming year will be the work of the climate change working group, and they could report directly to council or to FNGP. The terms of reference for all the committees will be coming to you for approval at the first meeting after the annual town meeting. But what is acceptable to you in terms of timetabling of meetings will then inform what may be the best way to, the terms of reference for the committees. The other one which could possibly be reduced is Radford House and Custom House. And I can understand why these two were grouped together in properties, but in reality, there's not much coming around for Custom House other than things to do with repairs and maintenance, which could go directly to FNGP.
FNGP, yeah.
Whereas actually Radford House, I think there needs to be a more nimble and quick-to-organise group, and this would be the working group with kind of part councillors, part community group members, who as things escalate and the ball gets rolling at Radford House, are probably going to need to meet quite often and can be reporting to council on a monthly basis or as needed.
I'm quite happy with that.
Have a, put a point in here about the Local Government Act does say that if the chair of the council is present, they must preside. And so the real kind of fine reading of the law is either the chair needs to be prepared not to attend meetings, or the chair needs to be prepared to chair all committee meetings.
Which is the point councillor Campbell used to make.
Yes. However, I do appreciate that that could be very time-consuming for the chair. And I think there's a lot of merit in having, cabinet's not the right word, but spreading out the responsibilities. So I would say that if you were to continue to have different committee chairs, just be aware that there is an issue with the narrow reading of the nineteen seventy-two act, that a future chair could say, no, I must chair everything and be in the right.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, no, it's really people's thoughts on the plan that I've started and councillor Green has expanded on.
Okay, councillor Crittenden.
Yeah, I just, some general thinking at the beginning here. How do these changes affect the way that we are a committee structure? So I just wanted some clarity on that. I do think I agree with councillor Huxley. This last year has felt really quite chaotic. We've had extraordinary meetings, extraordinary meetings, we've had crazy meetings. And, okay, so I'm a double hatter, but even if I wasn't, I may have a full-time, much more full-time job than I've had, and just kind of chucking things in, and oh, I've got to be early tonight, because it's just felt chaotic. So I think bringing it back into something, I like the idea, I'm coming with that.
Just before the town clerk says anything, when the pandemic happened and we were online, we actually had less meetings than we should have had, and it was quite difficult, obviously, to do everything online. And then obviously, the period where we didn't have the town clerk, there was an awful lot of things that needed to come back into place. It was just one of those years. I don't think that is the norm by any stretch of the imagination. It was us playing catch-up, plus playing catch-up with somebody, we were getting OFAE with our systems and making sure that we were back to where we were with the sort of like the grounding, so it was unfortunate.
I'm not suggesting anything else. I also am very aware that we actually now have a town clerk who is on the board. Maybe perhaps we were experienced with in the first year. So obviously, the pandemic has happened in between. We came in as councillors under a different town clerk. in as councillors, I have a different town clerk, councillor, I was also in on that piece of labour. So, yes, I appreciate what you're saying. But yeah, fundamentally, I'm agreeing, I like the idea. I, just wondering how many in term, I was thinking eight full councils, sorry, ten full councils a year, missing out August and December, as do politics generally, because, you know, nobody wants to come to a meeting in August.
Why not?
But the town clerk did want to say something and I interrupted her, so.
There's actually been eight extraordinary council meetings in the last year and there's been even more extraordinary committee meetings. So, I'm hoping that if we can have more regular council meetings, it might eliminate the need for so many extraordinary meetings. Because if in doubt, a full council meeting can deal with any business.
Yeah, and on that, I was thinking, I was going to say, I agree completely with the idea of the Radford House Committee being much more of a, a more reflexive working group in its style of working. And I believe we still need to have the planning and infrastructure committees to deal very specifically with planning. But the rest, I'm not so sure.
Can I just confirm that we are voting on this?
All councillor Green's amendments.
Right. So, we have two options here. So, there's a draft proposal and then we have the alternative proposal with the amendments.
I also say, I think it'd be, there were certain things that members were in agreement that they liked but disliked. I could then go away and work on this to come back to you with a, something that would hopefully then be acceptable.
Chair, could we ask councillor Green to explain the amendment?
Absolutely.
I agree, I particularly agree with the town clerk that we do not do full council meetings for the reasons that she said, and also not do planning and infrastructure meetings. Where I differ is over the way the committee system is treated for the other committees. I think just to have one express meeting a year is, and similarly with only two term motion meetings a year. Where I see the value in it and having it, that's three or four times a year, is that it gives councillors a chance to develop ideas and processes in different environments without actually making a decision that ties to council. Because as we've just seen, discussions at council tend to be the yes or no. And so, I looked at what went throughs were available and produced this alternative, this committee meetings. Now, I accept that this next, particularly for these same councils, whether we should be considering that, I guess we should, because it's, yeah. I would probably support the town clerk's suggestion that we don't have everybody coming to every meeting every committee. And then, those that did ask for a particular committee, we concentrate on that as well.
Yes. May I say, I fully support councillor Green's schedule. I think I was possibly a bit nervous about putting so many meetings in, but actually, the, still maintaining the same number of committees for the, for the really fine detail in projects is beneficial.
Okay, councillor Albon.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, as the current chair of Radford House, that it is going to move, it's gonna, issues are gonna move and they're gonna start to move quite quickly soon. And I think we need to be flexible in relation to that, to that. So, I mean, I'm quite happy, as the chair actually stands at the moment, that I would, I'm more than happy with just, you know, having the one or two meetings a year and, but it will happen that they will be more frequent, but not, it will be like during the day or it'll be something, it'll be at Radford House, it'll be whatever, depending on what's happening.
Sounds like councillor Green said, it would be effectively that committee, the Radcliffe House Committee, would be at other times.
Yeah.
Whereas actually, the set meetings here.
Yeah, yeah.
So, effectively, what we're talking about is again, councillor Green said with regards to, yes, more meetings, but what the town clerk's saying with regards to the committee setup. So, I've got councillor, councillor Edgerton.
I agree with councillor Green's scenario here and I think it's very true what you're saying, that it gives the opportunity to discuss ideas, explore things a bit more. The committees are very important. I know I'm not on a double hatter, but I don't find it too arduous currently.
Thank you.
I think there's a number of really good ideas. I think definitely trying to reduce the number of meetings, although I just know I'm doing something kind of Wednesday night now, so it's not going to the gym anymore. But also, being able to maybe choose which of those committees we go on that might play to our strengths as well and our interests. But also with Radcliffe House, because it has got to be flexible, because things will move and then they'll stop, and then they'll stop, it will ebb and flow. But couldn't we have a standard item on a full council meeting, which is just Radcliffe House?
Or even, or even.
Radford House, yeah.
Fire station, so that there's just a quick update and it could be, there's nothing new to tell you.
Yeah. I mean, that's the perfect idea.
It might be that we do that with other things.
So, am I right in saying that the motion that we're effectively looking at proposing is the fact that we go with David's option of having the full council and planning, as the town clerk said, with these other committees, that not everybody has to attend and we can deal with the finite issues of who does what, when and wherever later on in the day. But that's basically what we're looking at. It lessens the meetings for people, it makes us more focused, it makes sure that we have a full council handling and action things in a timely manner. Yes, right.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely, true. Yes, councillor Critton.
But I'm looking at councillor Green's list and I'm more confused than I am by the town clerks, which actually makes complete sense to me and I'm coming with that one.
And that's your vote?
It's fried on.
And that's your vote? Okay, so all those in favour of councillor Green's proposal of the full council and the planning, plus the other committees, but the committees would be smaller, so you wouldn't be attending all those meetings. So, all those in favour of that. Thank you, all those against.
No, it's amendment to the proposal that we got. So, the proposal should come first.
Right.
Abstained, I don't understand.
That's all right. You're allowed not to understand it if you don't want to.
Go on. I can't hear you, sorry. Do we have to do that now though? That's what I'm saying. We can. Yes, but that's what I said, we can iron out the finer details of it another time, is what I said earlier. Six is being mooted.
Should that be free, free choice? I mean, if somebody wants to attend every meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Attend every meeting.
Town clerk? So, the terms of reference for committees, and usually the dates, are something that's confirmed after the annual town meeting. So, we'll now bring the terms of reference with some amendments to you in a week. At the moment, councillors are not named on the terms of reference, it just says fifteen councillors. And I think there's the expectation that there will always be one person absent. But it does leave us open, that there could be sixteen people to turn up and an elected representative is asked to leave.
Yeah, we know that.
But, no, the terms of reference should have named members.
Yes. And then other members can turn up if they wish.
We are on item number six point two, to approve a draft, the role site representative for Ramsgate allotments document.
This has been drafted by the allotment officer and it was something that I believe we should have in place to standardise and explain the role to any new site representatives and to give a clear explanation of what is expected of them.
Any questions about that? No, all, second that if it's proposal. All those in favour? Thank you. Okay. Six point three, to consider and approve a draft, civic mayor of Ramsgate Protocol and Procedures document.
This is not intended to make any comment about past mayors or incoming mayors, but there can be quite a change in how the mayor wants to take forward the role and what they expect of their PA. And so, this is just trying to standardise what the council would like the mayor to be doing, which then helps assist the staff members who are working with that mayor. Any comments?
I'll second that. All those in favour? Thank you. Six point four, to consider a motion from councillor Green, standing order. I'm saying that. Oh, gosh. You want to withdraw it? I remember seeing the email.
It followed a particularly lengthy meeting where I think everyone was quite tired and a suggestion you had the following day.
Okay, right, well, it's withdrawn, that's super. Right, we're on to item number seven.
I bring it instead then, please, Chair. I think it's really, I mean, I've had meetings all day. It's twenty five past nine, I haven't had a meal yet today, on time.
Yes, less than this, exactly.
That was the substantive part of my comment. Hopefully, better run the meeting, they don't run on forever.
Yes. Better run meetings are good when people think about the point at which they're trying to make without the preamble before it. Item number seven, budgets, basic parish allowance and ward grants. Number one, councillors are asked, as per standing order, blah, 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 to suspend a particular standing order unless it reflects mandatory specifications. And if they wish to rescind the standing order that states a resolution should not be reversed within six months in order to get the following reports. Probably doing that one.
In advance of councillor Piper explaining the motion before you, I've brought this back to the agenda because this is a matter that I presented to you and I understand that there's some confusion in the way I presented this to you. But happy to be scrutinised and so I brought it back to the table so that if members feel that they lacked clarity when you first considered this motion, there's the opportunity for you to revisit the matter.
Councillor Green.
There's no concern, Chair. No, there's no confusion in mine.
No, there wasn't in mine either.
It was explained in the town clerk.
Okay, thank you. I agree. Basically, we had an allowance that was given to us that couldn't be used for a ward grant. It was decided that if we were ever going to attract new people and they had expenses that they had to take care of to be able to come in, you know, single mothers, spares, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that this grant would be used. It was also explained that you don't need to have this, you can refuse it. So, it's not instantly put into your bank account. If you can afford not to have it, then absolutely you don't need to take it. But for those people that do need to have it, it would be there for them should they want it. So, that was explained quite clearly in the meeting prior to that. We voted for it, so therefore allowing those people that do need it to have it, because if you voted against it, it meant if somebody needed it, they couldn't get it. Whereas, like I said, if you can afford not to have it, you are within your right not to take up the grant. It was for expenses only, it was not to be used for your ward. Okay, so.
And you've left, Chair, are we still talking about suspending the standing order or not?
Um, yes. So, are we suspending the standing order?
I'd like to propose we suspend the standing order and look at it.
So, I've got a second that. Right, all those in favour?
I don't quite understand what that means.
Basically, it means we didn't look at it fully in the first place and therefore we're going to look at it again. So, therefore, we have to do the protocol of all of that. That's, so we're allowing ourselves to do that, is effectively what we're looking. Yes. Go on, please, yes.
So, our, any resolution of the council should not be overturned or changed within six months.
Okay.
Unless there's a material reason to do so. So, we're putting aside the standing order that says that we shouldn't revisit something within six months. And the suggested reason for doing so is that there was confusion when the matter was first brought to your attention.
Chair, I wasn't at that meeting, so I wasn't part of the discussion and I don't think it would be fair of me to take part in this. I would abstain anyway of whatever decision is taken. So, I'm going to leave, Chair.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. Okay, that's a question.
Yeah, there are two things. Firstly, I wasn't at the last meeting either, so I am coming into this a little dark, not having been aware of previous discussions. However, I wanted to pick up on what you were saying just now in the introduction about the choice and the use of the word need. And so, if you need the money, you can claim it, if you don't need the money, you don't have to claim it. I feel uncomfortable with that kind of phraseology because that then could lead some people feeling, well, I don't want to admit that I need the money, so I'm not going to claim it because I don't want to be, you know, I don't want people to know that I need it. And so, it actually, either everyone gets it. Or not.
I was about to, I was about. I agree with you and I can explain that later, but I was about to say the same thing. That's something that would come after we talk about the standing orders. So, it's all about standing orders at the moment. Do we suspend the standing order to discuss this, is the.
We just voted on that, didn't we?
We just did.
Well, we hadn't finished it.
So, yes, it was all in favour. Actually, I lost track of how many hands were up.
That's what I was about to say, because we didn't finish the vote and we didn't finish counting because the town clerk's not good.
They asked for clarification, so I stopped the process.
So, we're voting on whether we suspend the standing order to discuss this. All those in favour? All those against? Motion failed. Thank you.
Chair, a point of order, please.
Sorry, councillor Moore.
Listen to what Helen said, I agree with that, that it should be private.
Yes, it is.
And if you want, have it, if you don't, leave it. And nobody knows anything about it.
Exactly. And I think that not to be hung up on the word need, I think it's effectively where we was going to that, it's like, you aren't, if you feel that you would like to, as TDC officers who are there, grants for example, feel that they would like to not take it, that you are entitled to not take it, is really what I mean. So, rather than focus on the words need, I've got, I think it's a, certainly, councillor Piper.
Just, Clarty, on a point of order, please, because I know we're not going to have the debate because we can't. But on the original recording and again this evening, you have said if people take it, they cannot use it on their award grants. And I would object, you cannot tell me what to do with my money, I can do what I like with it. So, that would be the first one. But the main point of order is. so that would be the first one. But the the main point of order is. Can I, for clarification, can I bring this back for further detailed discussion on some of the finer points, once the six month date has gone, given that we haven't discussed it today and we haven't? Six months, I could bring it back.
Certainly, but councillor Piper, what I was going with that is is more to focus, or again, focusing.
No, no, please don't tell me what I'm thinking about. Chair, that's not your.
Councillor Piper. It comes to a point, as is said with TDC, about allowing people expenses for the work that they've put in and. Okay.
You can't discuss it.
We discuss it six months.
Thank you.